...call this special me- city council meeting to order, which is the purpose of our public hearing for the annual budget. First reading, good. We have roll call, please.
George Kling.
Here.
Shane Shepherd.
Here.
Mark Graves.
Here.
Kevin Alexi.
Here.
Clay Anderson.
Here.
As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection A of Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the Openshooting Act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. And as I stated previously, this meeting is a public hearing for the annual budget. This is our first reading. If memory serves me correctly, we all have three total. So, our city manager, I understand, is ill this evening. So, Michelle, if you could make some comments about the budget. I think a couple of the council member, probably all of us, has some questions about some items in the budget.
Sure.
Mayor, council, Michelle Stoke, City Hall Finance Officer. I wanted to go through mostly the changes that we made between the first, between the draft of the workshop and this copy. The first thing I want to draw your attention to is on page eight. This is the general fund totals page. And this is kind of where we started and where we ended. But we, particularly the little list of totals there, half, two-thirds of the way down the page underneath the blue bar. We made a bunch of changes there. We took out the City Hall stucco, which was on the previous draft, and the PD improvement for twenty thousand. Each of those was twenty thousand. We took those out. And then we also took out the Conex for five thousand. And Tom was thinking we'd probably be able to do that this year out of excess funds left over in our budget. We also took out the investigations car for the PD because Chief said that he thought he might have enough left over in his budget to just do it this year rather than do it next year. I think that's right.
That's what I was asked to do, Michelle.
Okay. So, then we also added the match for the airport snow removal equipment building. That was in here, and it wasn't in here before. Then there are some questions about the salaries, and we did make some position changes before the first reading. And so I'm going to go through the different funds that have employees in them so that I can tell you what we changed and how many FTEs and part-time employees we have. So, in administration, which is Fund eleven on page nine, there are no new positions. We have six full-time and one shared part-time. We share our cleaning lady with the PD. And then speaking of which, we'll move over to the PD, which is on page seventeen. We have two officers, a lieutenant, and then a half, half of the code position. We're wanting to put in a code officer and share it with zoning and building. And so those are the open positions, which is thirteen full-time, one part-time, a full-time shared, which is the code person, and a part-time shared, which is our cleaning lady. And that's what is in for the PD. Over here on communications, am I going too fast? Is this, is this okay?
If you're on that page with public safety, I noticed the legal expense. You dropped it from, you project, we're already at fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And you project fifteen thousand. I'm sure we'll exceed that for this current year.
Right.
And then you only budgeted ten thousand dollars for next year in legal costs. I suppose if we, the police department doesn't arrest anybody, we won't have to pay the legal fees, so.
Just put on what you wanted, and that is actually what we budgeted for this current year is ten thousand. So, we just kind of brought it over. Of course, we can change that between readings if, if.
Would that cover Chief in normal year?
Yeah, last year we had an anomaly happen where we had a pretty good expense come out. For no reason.
Okay.
Which is not typical for our department.
Because if you look back on twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four, they were nine-three and eleven-six, so if we bring in.
Right.
Yeah. Any more questions on the police department? I'm going to touch on the communications. They're on page twenty-one. There's no new positions, and that department has seven full-time employees. And then fire doesn't have any employees. They're all volunteer. We have work comp and volunteer insurance, but that's the only employee-related expenses for fire. The next one is on page twenty-six, zoning and building. And that is where we have the other half of the new code position is going to be under Janet. And then we have one full-time and one shared full-time, which is the code position. Any questions on zoning and building?
So the, so your budget, Rick, has that new position, right?
Half of it.
And half of it is in this, right? Okay.
Community service officer.
Gotcha. Okay.
That's what we're calling it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on zoning? The next one is airport, and that's on page twenty-nine. We're adding one part-time. So, we'll end up with two full-time and one part-time in the airport. Next apartment is library on page thirty-three. No new positions. They currently in this year and will have next year four full-time and three part-times. Fund thirty-fourty-two Cemetery, Parks, and Rec is on page thirty-six. And I showed no new positions. We have four full-time and three part-time in there.
On that one, I noticed just the, in the regular salary-wage expense and part-time salary-wage expense. Well, I guess it was just regular, there was a reduction of almost sixteen thousand dollars, if nothing's changed. From what was budgeted last year, I guess.
Are you talking about the total personnel expenses?
No, just the regular, the regular salary-wage expense, the adopted budget last year. It's, it's almost sixteen thousand dollars less what you're asking, what's being asked for. If nothing's changed, I'm just wondering why it's less.
Because, let's see, yeah, the adopted budget was a hundred and ninety-four last year, and this year we're proposing a hundred and seventy-eight. And I don't remember what the conversation with Tom was about that.
He restricted part of Scott's wages to airport.
Okay.
That is, that is true. We, seventy percent of Scott's wages is in parks, and thirty percent is in airport. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about cemetery parks? The aquatic center. We added one full-time. And so then we have thirty percent of Janet's salary and two full-times and fifteen part-times.
How many full-time did you say?
Two.
Two.
So I noticed the personnel went up in three years like a hundred and fifty thousand? Is that, is that because a lot of? Well, in twenty-two, it was, uh.
Well, that's when we didn't have a full-time manager.
Oh.
And in twenty-three, we didn't have a full-time manager because I was working with all part-timers.
Okay. I just saw that trend going up, and I was like, and then, and then with, with your, with your adjustment with, right. And then you taking over part of that.
Well, my, my salary's always been a portion of it taken out of there. So, that's where you're seeing a regular salary. That's a little bit of my salary, so it's been out of there. So, then in twenty-four, twenty-five, we did have a full-time.
One.
Right.
Person and then part of my salary out of there. Now, our thought process here is that if we have, have two full-time employees, then maybe we can keep a full-time person.
Right.
Because they're burning the candle at both ends, and they're getting burned out.
Yeah.
I don't know whether we're going to be able to find personnel. I'm hoping.
Any other questions on aquatic center?
On the, so on the expense, it was pushing five fifty for the, this year, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that trend is going up too. Is that, is that some improvements we're doing? Like with the showers and stuff?
Which line am I in, or you want to change?
I think he's under total operating expenses.
Yeah. For personnel?
Well, one of the big ticket items there is we have to paint the pool basin. And the last two years, we painted the therapy pool a zero entry, and those two are smaller ticket items.
Oh, okay.
The pool basin will be between twenty-five and thirty thousand, where the other two are about eight thousand. So, that adds a big chunk right there.
Big chunk.
And then also our personnel is quite a, is quite a big increase.
Yeah. Just under forty thousand dollar increase for personnel expenses alone.
Are any of these increases subject to the state, the Shadron State College sharing?
All of those that we've been talking, all of the we've been talking about, George, are subject to, are shared with the college.
Okay.
So, that, that, I was reading, and that, then, the, the reimbursement we get through the college contract is through September thirtieth, twenty-thirty. And it, does that go, is that just a stable cost? I mean, is it, that reimbursement, is there any, like, percentage added each year, or?
We get the hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty, yep.
Four hundred. And then at the end of their fiscal year, which is the end of June, then we evaluate where we're at. And then we, if we're over, we subtract the revenue from our expenses, and then we subtract it in half where we're at. And if they owe us money, which they do this year, they reimburse us. And if we owe them money, we pay them back.
So it's kind of a.
The last two years, they've owed us a little bit of money. This year, it's going to be about thirty-eight thousand is what they, they're going to owe us above their contract.
So it's kind of like a live contract. It can.
It's, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then in twenty-thirty, when this, this contract we're under right now is up, we'll probably have to start renegotiating.
Okay.
And see where we're at then.
Anything else? The next fund that has personnel is the transportation fund, thirty-six on page fifty-seven. We don't have any new positions. There are four part-time. There's the drivers and one full-time. Ms. Julie here. Any questions for her? The next fund with personnel is streets, and that's on page eighty-three. That fund, we're adding two part-times so that we'll have four full-times, a shared full-time, and five part-times. I believe the shared full-time is over water. It may be with parks.
I don't know on the shared part, I just know, I just know our city can, it would probably be a shared position.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So with adding, adding the, the regular salary wage expense is actually going down by forty-two thousand. So, it shows that the estimated end of year is three-twelve, and what you're asking for is basically three-seventy, or two-seventy.
He doesn't have, he doesn't have anything in common?
Oh, sorry. So that would just be line sixty-one, the first line under expenses, I guess.
Yeah, four zero one zero zero.
Yes.
I'm not sure on that.
I was wondering if you were.
Did you have somebody leave?
I did, I did have.
Higher pay.
Two people.
He doesn't have a full department.
Full department this entire year, so.
Right.
I've been kind of handing out with guys, so.
So, two full-times?
And, yeah, so I've had one current full-time that was here for a long period of time and then left, and then had to hire a new guy. At a lesser wage, so that's probably what you're saying is the deduction there.
So, so your, your salary expense is going to go down for next year because of the new guy?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
That it? Eighty-one is the next department. It's on.
Water.
The water department on page ninety-one.
So on the, I saw on the water capital, there's a nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven percent increase.
The water capital.
I don't think it's, I think it was, I think I should have asked that.
In what?
I just wrote it down. I think it's, it might be at the top of.
I don't see any huge increases like that.
Well, yeah, we have, we have a hundred and eight as a total revenue for twenty-three, twenty-four. We have nine hundred and sixty-four thousand as total revenue for next year. That's, that's a story with our ARPA. The ARPA project was all water, and we held the ARPA funds in a different checking account. And so we wanted to transfer that money now that it's been fully spent out. We wanted to transfer that money out of that checking account, which is in the general fund. And I noticed that I haven't changed the nine fifty-seven. But part of this story is the nine fifty-seven was too big of a burden on the general fund reserves. And so Tom and I talked about it, and we decided to split that into three yearly payments. So that nine fifty-seven should turn into three nineteen, and I'll show you where it comes out of the general fund. But that way, we get a balanced budget with a little bit of extra so that we still have a little bit in reserve in the general fund while maintaining our, our required reserves.
I think what I, I think that's what you're talking about on page five.
Mm-hmm.
I saw that big.
Yeah. On page five.
Yes.
Well, I thought George was the only one that looked at these ugly things. Yes.
That, that's what you're, probably exactly what you're talking about, wasn't it?
That's exactly what I'm talking about, and that number, that nine sixty-four there for the capital reserve pulls from this cell. So, once I change it, which is what we're going to do, because in Fund fourteen on page thirteen, you can see transfer to water capital reserve all the way over there. That's three nineteen. That's, that's a third of the ARPA money. And then that forty-five thousand dollars is the ARPA interest that was earned the last three years.
Oh.
And that is gone, we're going to transfer that to the infrastructure.
Okay.
So that Janet can, and Dustin can build roads and water and stuff a little bit. So, but then next year, there'll be another three nineteen, and the year after that will be another three nineteen till that full amount of the ARPA grant is transferred over from the general fund. Any other questions on the water fund? Well, let's, um, let's finish up the salaries and, and talk about the wastewater fund, which is on page ninety-eight. That one, we're adding three part-times. So that we'll have three part-times, two full-times, and three shared full-times. And shared full-times are people like Tori. They are both water and, and sewer. Uh, Lori is both water and sewer, and then there's one other that is both of them.
Jerry.
Jerry. Sure. So that is what makes up the wa, the wastewater. Now, um, admin that deals with these, like part of my salary, ten, ten percent of my salary goes into each, the water and the wastewater and stuff. We, we smooth it out to hopefully reflect how much time me and Jen and Katie and, and the admin staff spend on the different, the different big funds, particularly the utilities, because they're, they're a lot of work sometimes. So, oh, and Nicole. So. Are there any other questions about salaries? And then I can take you back here and we can look at revenues. Revenues are on page seven, if you're ready. Property tax valuations aren't out yet, so this is the, the property tax on the thirty-one, zero, zero, one line is a best guess, but right under the limit so that we don't have to have, don't have to participate in the combined hearing. Then the city sales tax. I use, I took the last twenty-five years of data and did a regression calculation on it, so that each month that comes in of actual sales tax shows or calculates uh, an estimate, an average, moving average estimate for what we should get this year. It's going down, unfortunately, from last year, because the whole year has been substantially equal or a little bit smaller than the year before, so hopefully we'll have a boom next year and we'll have way more sales tax.
It's been trending like three years, I think, or four, hasn't it? For the last, if you look.
The trending-
Yeah, trending down.
And it, it has been at least level, and, or down a little bit. It hasn't been down a whole lot.
Right.
Not anything I would be concerned about, but it makes sense because of the economy. Hopefully, hopefully we'll have a better economy next summer. The rest of them, unless they're state numbers, franchise fees, the non-governmental, I calculated that based on, um, that's the wastewater and water departments franchise fees that they pay over to the General Fund. But there's also franchise fees, non-governmental, which we are raising. Um, that is NPPD, and we're raising that by five percent. So, they told us to. They sent us a letter and said, "You can do this," and so we said, "Okay."
I raised it five percent, half a percent, right? Cause my base was kinda twelve, and we increased it to twelve and a half, and now we're going to-
Okay, yeah.
Thirteen, I believe.
That's correct.
So, like, what, fifty basis points?
And we only have to notify NPPD by something, some date. Probably about October one, or something like that.
I was gonna say in September, but yeah, same thing.
I'll make sure that happens.
If we wanna do that.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what-
And the non-governmentals also include other utilities such as CenturyLink, Great Plains.
That would be the franchise fees and the Street Department. Usually- Yeah, in sixty-one.
Yeah, I don't see it in sixty-one.
There's a non-governmental right there.
Well, yeah, but that's what we were just talking about for NPPD, that they were saying it's not in here, it's somewhere else. I don't see that in-
I don't either. I'll have to look for it, cause I know it's there, so, um.
Cause there's government-
The local franchise fees?
Yeah, I know. They were saying non-governmental, it was just NPPD.
Three-
CenturyLink came from somewhere else.
Oh, oh, okay.
Somewhere else, but it's not. They said it was in the street, but it's not there.
Thirty-three, two-ten, that's not-
In the General Fund.
Right, but there's franchise fees in sixty-one as well, right?
Just that they're not listed, but they are.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll have to figure out why that's not in there.
Why would, why would that be in a separate place? I'm just out of curiosity.
I, I don't recall that the Street Fund was to get any of our internal franchise fees. Is that what we're talking about?
Oh, externals like, like, um, um-
CenturyLink, Great Plains Communications, they-
Yeah. And Great Plains, and-
I think they pay a percentage of total revenue.
NPPD, Great Plains, and our internal. Maybe a couple others. By internal, I meant the Water Department and the Sewer Department.
That goes into the General Fund.
Yeah.
So.
But that's under governmental, right?
That's under governmental.
Non-governmental would be NPPD.
So franchise fees, non-governmental, pretty sure there was, cause, um, Kelsey and I had a conversation about how, how those are being booked, and, and she knew right away, so, um, I'll, we'll have to look.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get off on a tangent there.
No, I mean, this is why we have these hearings. The more eyes I have on it, the more I can, um, make sure everything's correct before I actually file it, so. Okay. That's all I have, unless you have more questions on the revenue.
Well, I, I am concerned about what we're budgeting for the Admiral on tax, and how that's gonna affect the property owners. I, I don't know if we've had enough new property to absorb. And I know we have a little bit of it to absorb some of that increase.
Once I get a-
But, but other than that, it's going to fall on the existing homeowners with the increased valuations.
Um, once I get the valuation from the, from the assessor,
Yeah.
which is due to come out on the twentieth, then I have to calculate and turn it around back to her by the end of this month. Um, I'm not convinced we're gonna make that either, but, um, Tom wanted me to calculate it as high as possible without triggering the pink card or yellow card or whatever it is, the combined, um, hearing. So that's what I have right now, but I'm sure that's gonna change.
Any other questions about revenues?
But the home sit tax is included in that, right, Michelle?
Yeah.
Whereas before it was, um, broken apart.
Well, I break-
Well, in the budgeting process, it's always, the home sit is included in there, but when you get your money-
I book it.
Then you have a breakdown.
Yeah. So like last year, the budget said included too. So, yeah, that's, that's included, and then I break it down when it comes.
There were a couple of small items under the revenue which don't amount to a whole lot, but I just know the adopted budget for last year, the, uh, the therapy pool fees, we, we thought we'd get fourteen thousand, and, uh, the actual, of what we thought our year-end's gonna be sixty-five hundred. So that's why it's probably budgeted for seven thousand. What's, what, what-
They're just not doing, um, there aren't too many surgeons happening.
Oh, I gotcha.
Inductive surgeons just aren't coming through like they, like they were prior to that. And I think that at one time they lost a therapist that could actually do the aquatic therapy. Now they gained one back just recently. But they, there was a while there were, Ezra was the only one that was doing it.
And then there's no airport shop lease anymore? So for revenue, we have zero.
Yeah.
The shop lease?
I know we're bombarding you with-
No, that's, and that's, that's what it's, that's what this is for. Um, we had, we're not, uh, maybe ending up, um, combining that with the building and land lease.
Okay.
Because the airline rents uh, a shop and a hangar and a, a, an office, a shop, and-
So Southern Air has been paying rent.
Yeah.
Have we been collecting it?
Yeah, but it's behind. It's behind.
But we don't anticipate that Denver Air connection is going to-
I don't know.
We have, we have a meeting with them, what was it, Wednesday?
This, this Thursday.
Next Monday, or-
Anyway, we've got a meeting coming up in the next week.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'll be able to-
I think it's next Monday.
Find that stuff out.
Discussing with them what their needs are going to be.
Yeah, so we don't know. Don't know. I mean, I could put a number in there and change it, but I just don't know.
No. Kinda connection with revenues.
Uh-huh.
Whenever I look over these bills, and we're paying that fuel flow fees, that's hard to say.
Yeah.
But we had fuel sales, Low Lead forty-three thousand, Jet A four hundred thousand. And we're paying fuel flow fees of a hundred and fifty thousand, and the cost of the Low Lead fifty thousand dollars, and the Jet A two hundred and eighty thousand, and that total's up to four hundred and eighty thousand. Is that intended to subsidize the FBO?
No, we can get twenty cents per gallon of that. The part of that, I'm not saying it makes it up, up the whole thing.
I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't the fuel flow fees be a little less than the-
Revenue?
It's cause we're losing money on every dollar that we take in.
We're, we're actually not, but the fuel flow fees are contemporaneous with the gallons that go out. The gallons that come in, we don't pay for until the next month. So there's kind of a timing difference there, but it's not that big of a difference. Fuel sales-
That's what's projected here.
Fuel sales, um, that's revenue of four hundred and forty-three thousand.
Yeah.
And-
Four hundred thousand. And then if you go back to the the airport, which, what's the number for the airport?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Forty-three.
The fuel flow fees are a hundred and fifty. And-
Costs of the Low Lead fifty thousand and Jet A two hundred and eighty?
Eighty, one fifty. It's a real slim margin, George.
Well, it's a negative thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
I've gone around the numbers for the actual, for the last couple of years, and then I got tired last night. Didn't do it.
So, um, last year, the actual activity for Low Lead and Jet A was fifty-nine, six, and two hundred and fifty-four, six. So two fifty-five and sixty, that's expense. And then the fuel flow fee was a hundred and sixty-six, six. Fifty-five and sixty is three fifteen. And a hundred and sixty-six is right at four hundred. And the revenue was four forty-five and fifty-six, so that was, is right at five hundred.
What page is this on?
Uh, so I-
Is that, is the airport?
This is thirty-five, it's on ten. Oh, oh, the airport, thirty-five.
What page?
It's gonna be different than yours, though.
Uh-uh.
Oh, is it the same?
Same.
The Low Lead and Jet A are fifty-three, three oh one, and fifty-three, three oh two expenses on, in thirty-five. And the fuel flow fee is forty-three oh eighty-six, and those are all on that page. You add those up.
Get four eighty.
It's what?
Four eighty.
Yeah, I, okay. I believe ya. And then the revenue-
Is the four hundred?
Four forty-five and fifty-six thousand. So that's five, what, ten, five eleven? So that's a margin of uh, what, seventy thousand dollars?
I guess I'm just looking, I, I don't know if George is looking at the same thing, but the budget's request, like he said, the fuel flow fee of one fifty, the low lead expense of two eighty and then the low, the low lead of fifty equals four eighty. And then as far as on the revenue side, on the requested amount uh, is four hundred for the jet A and then the forty-three for the low lead, which equals four forty-three. So that's what I think he's saying, it, it comes out to be a, a negative thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, I.
Is that what you're saying, George?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I um, I used Scott's numbers on the expenses and then I came up with the numbers on the revenue, but I'll tighten that up. That's, that's easy to do.
Hey, anybody else have any questions? On this special meeting for the budget hearing, public hearing. I suppose we should close the public hearing before we, before we're doing. So wanna make, make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, second by Clay, to close the public hearing at um, six forty-eight.
Good catch, George.
Do you have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Make a motion that we adjourn the special meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, second by Shane, do you have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay. Take a short break and we'll start the regular meeting at six fifty-five. Meeting of the Shadrin City Council to order, would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection eight in Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the Openshooting Act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. Could we have a roll call, please?
George Klein?
Here.
Shane Shepherd?
Here.
Mark Graves?
Here.
Kevin Alexi?
Here.
Clay Anderson?
Here.
Okay, could we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark, second by Kevin, approve the agenda, could we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, second by Clay, to approve the consent agenda. Would include some minutes from the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five council meeting and the monthly treasures report for June twenty twenty-five. Could we have, any have questions on any of those things? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, item B on the agenda. It's an item that we previously tabled, so if someone may make a motion to remove it from the table.
I'll make a motion to remove it from the table. Uh, resolution, is it twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two?
And I'll second.
Motion by Shane, second by Clay, to remove from the table, um, resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two. Which is an agreement with the municipality, financial state, money, financial agreement of state projects between the state and Nebraska Department of Transportation and the city of Shadrin. Janet, would you care to tell us?
Sure.
Um, what it all contains in a summary?
Okay, this is an agreement with the state of Nebraska um, to do work both on the east side of town and the west side of town, all the way out to the junction, um, three eighty-five going north. If you remember, we talked about this uh, two meetings ago. And our part of it will pay for the center lane through town and also a portion of the work on the sidewalks. Uh, we asked the state to take a portion of the sidewalks on the east side of town um, from the uh, the building where the state um, office is. From there going in front of Waltham Ford, we asked them to take that stretch of sidewalk and take it out to the west where they were stopping there by um, the old Taco John's building and add it going west and then also taking the sidewalk all the way out to Big Bat's driveway. And they agreed to do that for us, since we have more people walking on the west side of town than we do on the east. And then we also asked them to take out the blinking light there by what used to be Donald's, where the kids used to come down the eye, the alley from the middle school and cross the highway there to go to Donald's at lunchtime. And they agreed to both of those things. So now we believe that the um, agreement is ready for the city's signature and then we'll send it for the, to the state and get their signature. So they made those changes.
The state projects the construction costs, our share, which is going to be, what, they project three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five twenty-one. And the engineering, almost twenty-four thousand.
But they did put a caveat in there that it could go up.
Yeah, yeah, they most assuredly will.
Yes, it probably will.
Do we have any idea about timing when this might happen?
They want to bid it in um, December and then hopefully um, construct next year in the construction season.
Okay. I wasn't sure it was going to happen that soon, but that'd be good, we, we've been.
Depending upon how their bids come in, it could happen next year's construction season. If the bids come in totally over the engineer's estimate and they have to go out and rebid, that'll throw everything off.
I, I know past councils have been talking about sidewalks out on the west.
Yes.
For quite some time and so.
I, I do know that they're, they wanna go forward with it. I had an email this morning where they're um, working on the floodplain information and I just sent all that stuff back to them because they, the floodplain there at the box culvert there by Bower Campers and then there's two culverts out further west before you get to the um, actual junction to go north, that there's floodplain right there too. So they're still pushing it forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think that's all we need to do. Have any other questions? Janet left the podium, but if she can come back if you have to have a question for. If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, I can move on to item C. Someone care to introduce that?
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash five nine and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kevin and second by Mark to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-nine, which is to recommend award of the sixty by eighty by sixteen, all feet, post-frame building for the street department. Our street superintendent is here and he's going to explain the bids and what we received.
Uh, good evening, council, Dustin Glass, street superintendent, ten thirteen, East Niobrara. Um, we had two very good bids, they came in under our budgeted amount. Um, one from Darryl Lang at one ninety-eight, four sixty-five and then one from Cooper Cogdale for one ninety-two, or a hundred and ninety-two thousand even. So uh, I recommended to award the bid to Cooper Cogdale and as far as we know, he'll be starting the end of September, at least on the floor. And dirt work and.
Is there an end date on it?
Nope, I think it was a hundred and, a hundred and eighty days. Due to weather and that, so.
What was the initial engineer estimate?
Uh, we didn't have to have an estimate because it was under the engine.
My estimate was one hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
Like a full engineer estimate, we, we didn't have one, we didn't have to have one.
Okay.
Cause the building, building was under the size.
I gotcha.
Has any?
And since we did have an engineer involved, this is called like a pre-engineered building, is that?
No, um, because um, the engineers and architects act requires an engineer if it would have been over the five thousand square feet and it was under that, so we didn't have to have an engineer involved. So that's why it was allowed to do, we were allowed to do it the way we did it. So my estimate was a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Probably in layman's terms, this is probably referred to somewhat as a post-frame building?
It is a post-frame building, correct.
Yep.
Or a pole barn.
Pole barn, yeah.
Post-frame, yes it is, it's a, it's a post and beam building, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you, Janet.
Has, have we used Cooper for any projects in the past?
Uh, we have not. Uh, we have not.
Just small, little bitty things.
Well, street department has it physically.
But you're familiar with some of the projects around town he's done?
The most recent building permit that Cooper did was Bryce Landon's building out there on East Niobrara. We call it the motel on East Niobrara, and it's a very well-constructed, put-together building. So it's, it's pretty cool. Tom and I took a tour of it probably about six weeks ago. It's a well-put-together building. Bryce did a really nice job. He also did some work on it, so he should be happy with it.
Any other questions for Dustin or Janet? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item D on the agenda, would someone care to...
I'll introduce resolution 2025-60 and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Clay, to approve resolution number 2025-60, which is to allow temporary use of U.S. Highway 20 at the intersection of Highway U.S. 20 and Main Street for the Shadron State College Homecoming Parade on Saturday, September 27, 2025. They have completed the usual agreement. As a, as they noted, be nine o'clock to 11 o'clock. You want to have any questions? It's kind of a normal thing. They like to have a homecoming parade. No questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Okay, someone care to introduce?
I'll introduce resolution 2025-61 and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin, to approve resolution 2025-61, which is, um, the proposed salary schedule for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. We have it in front of us. I'm sure we all looked at it, um...
I had a few questions regarding that, so I would, I would like to make a motion to table that till next meeting.
Okay, I had a motion to table this, so I believe probably the city manager will be present, and so we could ask questions.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane, to table any action on, um, the salary schedule or the, yeah, proposed salary schedule for 2025-26.
There's no time constraints for this? Does, okay.
No.
Okay. Okay, could we have roll call, please, on the tabling?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, item F. Ordinance number 1442, first reading. Ordinance number 1442 is before the council for its first reading. Please read ordinance number 1442 by title.
An ordinance to establish the amount of certain fees and taxes charged by the city of Shadron for various services, including but not limited to building in use, zoning, library occupation licensing and pet licensing, water, sewer and drainage systems and facilities of the city for residential users and commercial users, including industrial users of the city of Shadron for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for an effective date.
Okay, is there any discussion? We, it's pretty much the same as it was, we have in existence. We had a few items that were highlighted in red, um, for you. If I highlighted all the correct ones off my old-fashioned paper thing. Item number nine, under cemetery fees, uh, there's a new one called the monument setting I guess that's when somebody brings a monument for burial that's already taken place.
Correct. What basically, what basically what's for...
The city help us, help the people.
It's where to, where to tell them to set it. It takes time for our staff to actually locate where the monument needs to go, um, and the companies just show up and say, hey, where do I put this? And to make sure it's in the right spot, and to make sure that the monument's not too big for the spot that they want to put it in. So yeah, that's what that one's for.
Okay, and the next change that I noticed...
Is in transportation, I believe.
Yeah. City Transit, um...
So those would be under, right after police services?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry the pages aren't numbered yet, but every time you touch this, this, every time you touch this file, it's very delicate, and so I don't number the pages until we're at the very end.
So the rider for, uh, one-way has changed from $1 to $2.
Yeah, and I want Julie, if you want to come up here and talk about this, since this is basically you rather than, you've got yours, okay.
Okay, you want to go over the changes with us and why?
Okay, we're proposing to raise our prices to keep up basically with the surrounding communities, number one. The gas prices that are going up, the 30% reduction that we had with our state that cut our budget, all that. We don't want to lose any services if possible to the community by cutting them down, so by doing, raising the rates, we feel that this would be acceptable to the public. It's been positive since we started, and I had a piece of paper at one time that said, we are the lowest right now in all the communities, and if we bring it up to $2, we're actually comparable. Others are $3 and $4 for one-way, and then they start charging per mile, so much per mile. The one question that one might have is we took the passes which were worth their $20 up to $40, because it figures out to $2 a ride. They can still get the 22 passes, um, but we just feel that's best to help the community to keep our services going with everything going up, and things going up and things going down. Does that make sense? So we're just kind of trying to work the system in a positive way. I looked at the stats from '24 till now, and we're basically $1,000 down from collect fees, which is very good, because if you look at '24 stats, that's actually when everybody bought passes, which was $20, and so those passes took them throughout a whole year, so we're coming up to that point in time where they're going to buy a new pass to get them through the next year. There is a statement in there that, at the discretion of the transit manager, that we could make a decision on appointments for the trips, or possibly even maybe like with this, a fee if there's a hardship or something. That's something I have to discuss with the city manager or to the board if that was brought up, but I really don't foresee anybody bringing that up and complaining. And also, we have been, what do I want to say, assisting the Crestview home, the Prairie Pines home, because their buses keep breaking down, so we have been jumping in to assist them with their wheelchairs to get them to their medical, which puts a large impact on our regular riders, and so we actually charge them as well, as well as Prairie Pines, and then the hospital and the college have kicked in to say they will pay for their riders. So I keep a log on it, and I will send them a bill for six months for students or whatnot, so, um, they are paying us. But the Crestview and the Prairie Pines, we've been helping them out quite a bit.
In the long run, it's probably cheaper than them maintaining a van.
Yeah. Well, and I mentioned to Nicole, who's, I guess, husband runs Quality Tire, there is nobody in town that can service our wheelchairs, and Crestview has to send them down to Carney, and some send them to Scotts Bluff, so if we could hopefully find somebody locally, because the wheelchairs are, they're getting old and getting used a lot, and we have to service them every so often as well. And when we're down, that hurts us, because we do anywhere from five to maybe 10 a day for wheelchairs. Our van, we can do two, which is a godsend, because that's our backup, but we just found out we lost a mirror on the 2016 bus, which we can't drive until we get that replaced, so we put a rush order on that.
So it's part of the party, isn't it?
So, just little things like that. So anyways, so that is the reasoning behind the fees. When we do long-distance hauls, for instance, the airports and whatnot, we always use the van if that's possible, and we've been doing a lot more runs up to Rapid City Airport because of flights. We've had a couple people recently inquire about, um, medical, but that hasn't been confirmed yet, but at least they're inquiring about it, so. Oops.
Stand up straight and don't lean on the table.
Anyway, any questions on that?
That's the words for the mayor tonight.
And we will, it will work, I promise you.
Okay, you want to have any questions regarding the increase in, or the changes in...
Oh, one thing I might add. We don't know what's going to happen with the monies for the kids riding to schools. The OST, which is, I think, over all the, or the school tribe, usually, um, totally $800 a year pay for the passes, but with all the cuts and all, we haven't heard on that. So we did put out to the community that the parents can buy a pass for the kids, and we'll be happy to take them and pick them up, because hearsay, and it might be an update, that they weren't going to have after-school activities, which a lot of the parents use for babysitting services or something to help them when they're working, so we've offered them that service, that we would take the kids home or to school if that's needed.
I think that service did get funded.
Hmm?
The after-school service, it did get funded.
After-school program, yeah. So, and schools get out like a 3:15, and on Fridays it's 1:15, but we'll accommodate them if needed, because, you know, we can't have the cuts affect, we do our best, we adjust our schedules, so it doesn't affect with overtime or whatever.
I just had one other question. I was wondering, on the passes, since we're doubling the price, and you get, offer the two free, you know, would there be...
That's just a perk, so actually if you do $2...
Be more of a perk to, you know, encourage them, say three or four, but I don't know.
It just makes you feel better that you get two free passes paying 40 or 20, because you got 22 rides for $20. So it's psychological, reverse psychology.
Yeah, I know.
But if you double the price, I guess, or were you saying, why don't you double the free passes? So we, for 20, 20 dollars, you got two, so for 40 you get four?
No.
Is that what you were kind of...
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, it's not.
Too extravagant.
Or nice, but not that nice. We do have a drawing once a year, though. Remember, for the, with the barbecues.
Okay, um, no other questions about the city transit fees? Next thing was, uh, city sewer utilities, going from 3150 to 3465 a month, and additional units.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Going from 2650 to 2915.
So yeah, this year we're going to increase the sanitary sewer fees. Last year it was water. So the...
And the consumption fee, which is based upon water usage in December to February each year, goes from $1.10 to $1.21.
Correct. And then the dumping fees, too, on number seven, will increase.
Yeah. Minimum dumpy fee goes from $20 to $22, and over 100 gallons goes to, from $40 to $44, plus an increase of .035, three and a half cents per, cents per gallon to four cents per gallon.
So that's the total of our proposed changes in the fee ordinance?
Um, yeah, I had one question about the water utility. How are mobile home parks billed for the water?
They're just like apartments per unit.
Per unit?
Mm-hmm.
So they're metered separately, or is there one just massed?
They get their, they get their base fee and then plus per unit, so we count how many mobile homes are in each park.
So they have one meter?
One meter, and then you multiply that.
So like, just, so it's just like, um, an apartment complex. They get the, the base meter fee and then plus for every apartment thereafter.
Okay. And one other thing I noted was, in the sewer, we have an item outside the city limits, fees double, but we, but, and this kind of came up in some other discussions, should there be something maybe in our ordinance that if we ever start selling water to...
The state won't let us sell water outside the corporate limits.
Okay.
That's why we, if you remember, that's why we had to annex the golf carts. There's something about our water rights that says we cannot sell water outside our corporate city limits. If they want city water, we have to incorporate them.
Yeah, annex them.
Yes, we have to annex them.
Anyone have any other questions?
Anything else you want to increase? You know, like, we could charge carnivals more.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's right. We haven't charged carnivals for how many years?
But we're going to next year.
I think that number is...
Did you hear that?
...ump teen.
Right, Kevin? We're going to charge them next year.
Was that, it's a $100 fee, isn't it?
Per day, yeah.
Oh, per day.
I, I know a guy who, uh, told them that fur trade days would pay that fee.
Unless they start giving more candy apples.
So it's negotiable based on number of candy apples?
Okay, I'm retaking control. Ordinance number 1442 has been read by title on its first reading. The second reading of ordinance number 1442 will be on August 18th, 2025. Okay, ordinance number 1443, first reading. Ordinance number 1443 is before the council for its first reading. Please read ordinance number 1443 by title.
An ordinance to adopt the 2025-2026 budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities directing the publication of this ordinance and prescribing the time when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
And any discussion about it? It was largely the item... There's largely the items, and I didn't double-check the figures from the budget to this form, but I trust that they are identical, and they will be, as we make changes to the budget, then this ordinance will be changed. Anyone have any questions about? If not. Ordinance number 1443 has been read by title on its first reading. The second reading of ordinance number 1443 will be on August 18th, 2025. And item number H, someone care to introduce that?
I'll introduce Resolution number 2025-62 and move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Clay, seconded by Mark, for Resolution number 2025-62, which is to renew the city's insurance policies with the League Association of Risk Management, otherwise referred to as ALARM, for a three-year period effective October 1st. ALARM has this kind of continuous renewal program where they give you a discount if you have, sign up for three years. So every year, you sign up for another year, and that way, the city can benefit from a 5% discount. Anyone have any questions about that? As we probably have discussed in agenda meetings and maybe in other items that are coming for the city, insurance is a big item, and we're probably going to be looking at a fairly good substantial increase. But as, if we're all homeowners, we're probably all facing that dilemma.
I know there was some discussion of raising, raising the deductible with Tom at one point, but I think Michelle said that the next level was substantially, substantially more, so.
And didn't really.
You care to stand up? So the public can hear you on the recorded line.
The next deductible level was higher, much higher, and it didn't seem like there was that big of a rate cut to correspond with that, so.
So the cost benefit wasn't, wasn't there.
Kind of summarize what's in our letter from ALARM. It's a 26% rate increase for property, 5% adjustment level for liability coverages, and a 5% adjustment for workman's compensation.
And it covers quite a few things. Covers workman's comp, general liability, law enforcement liability, auto liability, auto physical damage, and commercial property. So it's pretty, encompasses quite a bit.
And the projected annual contribution is $328,679. So any other questions? Good. If not, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the claims as presented in our packet.
I'll second.
Motion by me, seconded by Kevin, to approve the claims. Anybody have any questions? Janet, maybe you could help us and maybe?
I was curious on that Brownfield bill for $19,000. What's that for?
The work that Ayers and Associates has been doing for us.
Yeah, that's part of that grant.
Oh, so that's, that's being paid for by that grant?
Correct, correct.
It's not part of the. Yeah, never mind.
Not part of the comprehensive plan, no.
No, we haven't received any bills for the comprehensive plan yet. We're just getting started on that. The work that they're going to do while they're here the second week in August, the meetings that we're setting up between, like the one that you got an email on for that noon meeting with the council and the planning commission that I hope you all attend. That'll be our first one, a big kickoff meeting. So that one's pretty important. And then we've got a couple meetings planned for different, different organizations to attend, and then also a big one for the public, those two days, too. And they'll be at Bands on Bordeaux that evening to capture any comments they can with the public. And they're going to be at Bean Broker on Friday morning?
Friday, yeah.
Friday morning? That'll be a big one for the public that can attend, but that'll be a kickoff for the comprehensive plan, those three days while they're here.
Janet, do you have any idea? This municipal supply in Nebraska, water, it charges the water department, training on Neptune 360.
The handhelds? The handhelds?
It's what?
The new handhelds that we just got to read the meters, water meters. They're, they had a class for all of the water people, all of our water personnel.
Okay. And this Neptune 360, is it a charge, extra charge, or is that part of our Tyler?
Well, it was, well, it integrates to Tyler, yes.
It integrates to Tyler?
New software for these handhelds that we just had to purchase because the old ones were, like everything else, no longer supported. And so everybody got trained on them, and they actually had somebody here that was training them for, it was like two or three days that they were getting training. So it was, I don't remember what the bill was, but it was substantial.
I'm surprised if you buy their product, they don't throw the training in.
Oh, no. Nothing's, nothing's free anymore, Mark.
Yeah, the training is $4,500. That's why I asked. It seemed like a lot of money.
There was a lady here that was here for at least two days training them. Kelsey, do you remember how long they were here?
Two days.
Was it two days? Yeah. So, yeah, that's what that was about.
And then another thing I noticed is, I was wondering, okay, from Warren, USA, for the airport, we purchased a Jack Rabbit Pro. I was kind of wondering what that was, and I figured out it was a sprayer. I assume mounts on some.
It mounts on the back of their four-wheeler.
Four-wheeler.
I did not know.
Same one I got.
A sprayer.
You have one, too, huh?
For the four-wheeler.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Destin.
That's all I had, so. Other council members have any questions about any of the claims? Not, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay. We do not need a resolution to excuse a council member, public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda may do so. Individuals are allowed a total of three minutes to speak. Rick, that was your time to talk about your upcoming event.
About the National Night Out?
Because I was going to take care of it in my comments, but why don't you do it? It's not on the agenda, but I'll give you the three minutes.
Council, Rick Excit, 125 Main Street. Tomorrow night, Roger and Chris Stevens are really promoting the National Night Out. It's a law enforcement promotion. We're going to be out at Bauer Kempers from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. We've got some, Roger and Chris have put together some signs. Some of you have probably seen them in some yards to say, support law enforcement. They're going to give those out. We're going to take pictures with kids with a Polaroid camera and hand those out, have vehicles. Dawes County has been invited, NSP has been invited, gaming parks have been invited along with us. So look forward to seeing some people stop in and just get this event kicked off. It's the first time we've really participated in it, and I appreciate the Stevens really putting this together and promoting it, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Since our city manager is not here, we do not have a report for him, so council closing comments, we'll start with Clay.
I don't have much. I'm just going to early shout out, congratulations to Dennis and Kathy Brown for their induction into the Nebraska Broadcasters Association Hall of Fame next week. They've done a lot for this community, and it's been nice having them working at the radio station.
Okay. Schools will be starting on the day of our next meeting, so drive watchfully and with care for excited students on their way to and from school. Congratulations to all who participated in the county fair and whose items are on their way to state fair. Congratulations to the, our senior baseball team who made it to a playoff game in Auburn. Unfortunately, they didn't come away with any wins, but they got there, and that's a big, big accomplishment. I want to thank everyone who contributed to helping our city look better for this year's visitors. It's kind of round two now on the weeds. We killed them the first time, and now we got some who are spouting up, so if we could kind of take care of those. And as was previously mentioned, comprehensive plan workshops are available to any resident or non-resident about Shadrin. They're working on the comprehensive plan, and they have open sessions on Wednesday, August 13th, from 12 o'clock noon to 1:30 PM, and those are, and these are at the Fire Department Training Center, which is 527 Arrow Drive. Go down Sixth Street, Arrow Drive, then you'll see it. And also, again, on Thursday, August 14th, from 8:00 AM to 9:30. So if you've got some time, then give it, come and participate in the sessions that they'll have to get an idea of what the residents and people on the, live on the outskirts of town, have an interest in Shadrin, would have some input, please come and get it. And the final thing, and I let Chief take care of that, so that's it.
My turn. I was going to say that, too, is Chief. Did you say the time?
5:30 to 7:00.
5:30 to 7:00. Okay, perfect. The only other thing I really had was I, I don't know, I, I reached out to a couple people, found out that we may be eligible in the process of trying to get some grants for swimming lessons. So I reached out to a couple people. The one person was out of town, but I will report to you and Janet on what I find out.
I just want to thank the city staff. The budget process is kind of an arduous, arduous thing, so everyone puts in a lot of time and effort trying to get all those numbers compiled, so appreciate that. Also, the final Bands on Bordeaux is this Thursday, or the 14th, the 14th at 6 o'clock.
I just wanted to thank Michelle for standing for the budget questions, whatever may come to mind. And just, I always take this time of year just to kind of reset my expectations in another couple weeks. Our traffic patterns change, the number of cars on the road change. Always seems like they're moving a train when I need to take my daughter to school. Just different things to think about when the, the fall comes in, so. To residents in the area, you know, enjoy these two weeks before Shadrin is abusaling once again. That's all I got.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Sean to adjourn. Yeah, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.